On August the second, Mr. Petty, we're trying to get a roll call.
All right, we got Councilperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
We got Councilperson, Justin Nopper.
Sir.
All right, we got Councilperson Tom Led, Abbott, and we got Councilperson Lenny Freiman.
Here.
Councilperson Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
Attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
Got Mary Kelly Milan.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, the topic for today is to discuss, hopefully for the, for the last time, and we can get, get some movement on it. Because I think you're gonna see, this is on the facade improvements for the community center. I think the last time we had met, we said we needed to trim a little bit. And so what you're gonna see today is, I think, in line with what we, we had talked about and what we need. And I'd really like to get some closure on this one, so we can get this project buttoned up and, and bid out. And, and hopefully get it bid out before the end of the year, correct? If I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think we can, we can shoot for that.
Construction starting in the spring. So, I'll turn it over to you guys and.
I'm gonna try this.
Guide us through.
Try this again. Yeah, it just says whenever I try to go council chambers for both, it just says not, source not supported. So I was just shooting it to, actually, maybe if I tried this.
We can get our IT guy in here if you want.
No, actually, okay, I figured it out now. I just had to pick both of them, so.
Good job, Justin.
All right.
No, he's, he did, I just.
Mayor, take it from here.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, gentlemen and ladies. We, my name's Dan McCloskey, Senior Architect with American Structure Point. Mike Koopengartner's here with me today. As, as Mayor said, we've been kinda working through some concepts here for the character of the renovation to the, the entrance. It was, you know, partially to solve some maintenance issues with that front, front entrance vestibule with some of the glass and the, and the roof piece. But we also, you know, the, the drive was to create a, a vision and a, and a character, a sense of entrance to that, that, that community center entering, entry area. So, not sure what you've seen before, but this, you know, we've kinda developed this scheme to try to meet the budget that we were prescribed to meet. And I think it, it does achieve some of those. So this is kind of a view from across that parking lot. We've got some views a little closer. So, we've, a- as we've tried to hit that budget, what we've tried to do is focus. We had some concepts early on where we kinda pulled the, the plaza rework out a little farther than what we have it right now. But I think the focus here is that, that entry piece, we're creating a, a canopy here that has some underlighting. It's kinda got the blue metal panel to match the context, proposing sort of a wood look metal soffit piece. So it's durable, maintenance, you know, low maintenance, some, you know, accent lighting on a, I think my mouse will show up here. The, we have kind of a beacon tower here that's just gonna bring a lot of attention to that entrance. The vestibule itself, typical storefront framing, maintaining that, that thermal vestibule system right to bring you into the main entrance. Once you kinda get past this existing line here, if you see my mouse up at the top, there's an existing kinda facade up there. If you bring that line down through, that's your existing interior side of that vestibule. And, and the intent is not to push any farther into the building. We are proposing currently, there are some curving concrete walls that kinda create a, an enclosed space right where this, this side is. That right now is kind of a, a no man's land in there. So we're gonna propose to cut those back. Those are not of structural, you know, significance. So that just opens up that entire facade, pulls off, on, on the other side of the entrance, there's also a, a concrete wall that we'll be cutting back to the building, so. As far as the, the, I think we've got a different view, you know, we're proposing some mix of some pavers. Those pavers could, you know, down the road be used for, you know, maybe some, some sort of donor, donor engraving and things like that. But it's also just to try to create a, sort of a pattern there to designate entry in and linear connections to, to the, the different portions. And I, I think some of the early discussions were also that this can create a gathering space for people when they're at those, at the baseball field. And it can, gives place, place to get undercover, some additional seating opportunities under that cover. And so I think just the improvement of that plaza space. There is a few little detail spaces right now along that backside of that scoring building for the main baseball field. We have to just kinda work through. So, as, as we would get into detailed design. So this is kind of an overview of the project. What we haven't rendered here, another portion of the project is also some accessibility ramps on the, on the, would be west end of the building. So that's also within the budget, we just haven't artistically rendered that to the, to date, so.
That would be on the, the side facing the pool.
Yeah, that's correct, that's correct. So.
Now, has that got a gap? To where the, where you put that, I don't know, where your porch is?
Uh huh, the canopy piece.
Is there a gap between it and the building?
Yeah, we're trying to disconnect it, we don't wanna superimpose that load on the building. But where, we can, we can try to put a, it'll be part of the detailed design is maybe create a gutter system to, to keep any rainwater from kinda coming through there.
That's why I'm saying people sitting over there.
Yeah, yeah. And we can, we can look at exact locations of where those, that seating is, is, to make sure that people aren't gonna get, you know, hit by falling water.
Now, this does not include any painting, uh, to the exterior?
No, no, the, the, the small bit that it does include is, we know that there's some current leaking issues with these, this bank of windows in this little area right here. So we're gonna dig into that and try to rectify that problem as we, as we get into here. But on this facade specifically, it's, it's really contained between that, that end of that little wing and then coming across here, you know, fixing that piece. So, the rest of the building is not, not in the budget to do any remediation to.
And what, just so you guys know, what we also talked about was maybe, you know, the benches that you see throughout the city that we have. We may put two or three, four of them fixed out there too, for people to, to sit on in the, in the, out on the concrete and stuff.
So Dan, on the entryway, the vestibule, will that all be new glass, new structure?
Yes, yeah, so, the, again, this, this header piece, I think I can zoom in here. This header piece is an existing wall that we shouldn't be touching. And right below it's where that, that current kinda atrium piece hits up to. So we'll, we'll have to kinda manipulate that. But that inner, inner piece of glass would be the inner side of the vestibule, and then it's all, it's all new from there out.
So it's larger than the existing vestibule was right now?
Uh, it might be actually very similar, but we're getting rid of that, that glass roof. It'll be, you know, traditional metal, metal stud and, and metal panel above, so. And with that new kinda roof on top, it's just, it's a much more maintainable system.
So the face of that, that's where we have quite a little leakage problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Will there be a ADA push button for the doors there?
Yeah, yeah, we, we can incorporate that, mhm, mhm.
One of the things is, as we continue to create our concrete jungle of a city, you know, there's, that is, in the middle of the summer, baseball, different things like that, that's a really hot area. I don't know if there's a way that we can incorporate some trees into that design.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we're taking a couple out.
Mhm.
And we, we are, we are at a massive deficit everywhere we go, it is, it's just really hot.
Yep.
You go to Newtown Park.
Mr. Abbott, what were you saying?
It's cool, it's cute. You know, we gotta, we gotta incorporate trees.
Okay.
We have, I mean, just, we need some natural shade.
Sure.
I can agree with that, especially.
Some nice sized trees.
Yeah, I mean, there's a green space there, we could plant a couple really nice ones there, but I mean, I think at least one or two.
Like down in this area?
Concrete area.
Yeah, well, and that's the piece I was saying, you know, we haven't, we haven't done a s- actual survey. But even though we're kinda showing this a little flat, so we've got a little bit of manipulation to do with the grays in there. And right now, there is a hefty step down where I think there are some trees right behind that scoring platform. So, we can probably bring that, bring that concept back. Trees aren't, you know, super expensive, and just the way we're gonna have to work with the grays anywhere, it's, it's gonna be a good spot.
Just to reiterate though, it's gotta be the right kinda trees.
Yeah, yeah.
We've had.
Oh, yeah.
Wrong kinda trees.
Even if there was an area, because there's a little bit undulation in the land right here with trees, then there might be a drain, right? Is there a drain right in here?
Possibly, yeah, yeah, probably so.
So I don't know, even if there was a small retaining wall right here, that we could sit on, drains down here, and then you got a couple trees planted right behind that retaining wall.
Yeah, that's a great comment.
A little bit similar to kinda civic park, you know, we have some of those.
Sure.
Where are the skateboarders gonna go?
Well, they'll grind on the, on the seat.
On a retaining wall?
On the retaining wall, yeah.
Everybody get those nine benches you wanna put there.
Yeah.
But that also provides some more seating too, for, you know, if we did a nice, you know, limestone cap retaining wall across there.
Yeah.
That's something we could put in there, right?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
What else do you guys see? Now, granted, you guys know, I mean, it hasn't gone out for bid yet, but what was the, the, the number on this?
So we, we've got this sitting, and Kendall can maybe support me here, we've worked back and forth with Maxwell. We're sitting a rough order magnitude, right? I mean, they did some, we had some pieces that we could do some ma- basic takeoffs on, but we're sitting at about 1.5 million dollars.
Well, I think the main piece that we're, we're fixing down here, and Mario can probably attest to this too, is that, that vestibule is a, a maintenance issue. It's gonna need, it's gonna need a lot of work anyway. But I think just even then taking out that dead space, where do we got that dead space down there now?
Curved wall.
That curved wall.
Mhm.
And opening all that up, and then if we can do those changes like Justin was talking about, I think that, those will be good additions to it too. I think it's just a great enhancement to the center.
So, right where we're showing the concrete going all the way to the right of the opening there, the vestibule there, that used to be landscaped area? Are we gonna keep that landscape, or are we gonna?
Are you talking like right here?
Yes, off to the side where that air wall is.
Oh, yeah, I think I recall there is some.
I think there's some bushes in there.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to look at, you know, because as we bring that canopy piece down, it might, it might start to define something we could create then, you know, keep. I assume it's maybe it's very similar to what you have, you know, over here, you know, bring that kinda mulch and planting back over there, that, that's.
Well, or even if it's a planter that sits on.
Right, just soften that up.
You know, to put some color in there, but.
Yeah.
I, I would, I personally, I, I think I like a planter instead of worrying about mulching that piece of it. So I think a planter would be nice.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a mess over there right now, yeah.
Do you guys have a specific planter? You have other places that you wanna bring in there, or is there something we need to specify, do you think?
That would be a wonderful question.
Thank you.
There you go.
Yeah, well.
We'll work through it, but.
I'm sure we'll find something.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
You gotta give her a button.
Yeah.
Sure, we'll find something.
Truck tires? Truck tires.
Concrete blocks and two by fours.
Your tire would be, be pretty, pretty sufficient.
There you go, there you go. I think a dragster, dragster tire.
Dragster tires, I think, cheap ones.
Yeah.
Get JR to initial it.
Yeah.
What else you guys thinking? I, I mean, I, do you like the enhancement? I mean, I think it's what we've sort of talked about, and I don't know.
Solves the problem, apply our accessibility requirements, get a little bit more shading, a little bit more seating, you know, some of those events down there are pretty.
Might as well put a ladder on, ladder on side of that porch.
Yeah.
All the baseballs gonna be on top of it.
That's, that's an interesting point.
It's only, it's only six, it's only six weeks of summer now.
Foul balls, yeah.
A lot of foul balls over there.
You probably got foul balls over there anyway.
A lot of them, they don't come straight back, do they? Cause we've got the, like, little angle on the top of the dugout, or the.
That stops, that stops some of them, not all of them.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, we get about half of those in a year off the road.
I just roll it, that's younger kids only now, isn't it, on that side?
It is.
Yeah.
I probably.
T-ball and.
Yeah, I probably helps keep it under the.
Okay, and what other questions we got?
What you're saying, that, that, I'm calling it a porch.
Mhm.
But it doesn't, it doesn't connect to the building itself. So, like, what first, the, where you got the benches there, it's gonna keep the water from running down.
Well, that's where I think we can, we can create a, we don't wanna structurally connect it, that's just, you know, it's a, it's a superimposed load that nobody really, that building wasn't designed to carry that sort of extra piece. We can keep it really tight, you know, I mean, two, three inches off that building, there would be maybe some water. That's where I'm saying we might be able to make a little wall, because I think there's a condition down there at the base of that wall, we might have to build out a little bit anyway, just to kinda clean it up. And we can just kinda push that canopy back, or not the canopy, the seating out from that. So, that's certainly a detail we're gonna look at, but we just gotta kinda develop that whole section there to.
Cause you get water and stuff down here, it instantly, you could have moss or anything, you know.
Yeah.
It's gonna change the color of the concrete.
Yeah.
And people sitting over there, a lot of people be sitting in there, especially if it rains.
Mhm.
If it's wet.
Right, yeah, certainly we'll, we'll take a look at that, make sure that, maybe we hit a, hit a small gutter in that area.
You're not gonna melt, Lenny.
I would say something to that, but I'm not gonna say it in here.
That building's gone through a lot.
Shut up, Abbott.
I said that building's gone through a lot, Kroger store, liquor store.
Yeah.
Sears and Roebuck.
Yeah.
It has, it.
A lot of things.
Sears and Roebuck, pull that, I've heard that a lot.
Richard, what kinda comments you got?
Can you go back a couple of pictures?
Sure. Uh, it's, trust me, I am moving, oh, there it goes.
Right here.
Uh huh.
How big is this cove area?
Oh, call it seven, eight feet wide, probably. It, one of our things to try to contain the cost was to shrink, we had that canopy actually farther over to get closer to that, that, you know, protruding metal panel over there to the right. With just from a, a sense of scale and budget, we just, we tried to shrink it.
That's your off problem, the item here from my house. Put it right in front of them. Well, I'd rather add, because I'll tell you what the problems would be.
Cycles.
So all this cove over here is gone, right? So that's.
Yes.
Right to the end.
Correct.
If we have this dead space here, that's gonna become a hangout for our.
Cycles will all be in there.
Mhm, mhm.
And we're not gonna be able to have eyes on them unless I'm looking out my office.
Mm, mhm.
It could be a potential issue. I'm not saying it would be, but it's just, there's a potential there to create, you got this cove, but then you created this littler one over here, which still gives them a hiding spot.
Yeah, I mean, we can.
Is that, is that just a knee wall?
This guy?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we can shorten it and.
That's open through there, Richard, is that?
Yeah, we've got a, let me see if I got a different, slightly different view.
Right.
So we've got an opening here, we can play with that opening being farther back towards the building, and really just open that up and, but still let that piece come down.
The design is great, and I like it, and it would suit every purpose that we have.
But just.
Just from my experience and perspective, that's, it will be, it could be a potential issue.
Is, is there a way to move, move that wall further?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Is there a way to move that, that wall?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Does it have to be a wall, couldn't it just be posts going down?
I, I think we could.
I'd use your bike rack.
What about, yeah, what about, I was gonna say, what about putting a bike rack here?
That's where all the bikes are gonna go, that's where I see.
What do you think about that, Richard?
That would work.
On the.
As it were more, like, if, if I'm walking out and I'm walking by it and I look over, and I have a, a good clear shot in there, that would be, I think, the, the deterrent that we would need.
So like, Tony was saying, could we go with just vertical column sections?
Yeah.
Is that for a bike area over there?
Yeah, yeah. Are, are you thinking bike racks that, we had a image really early on, if you remember, that we, you know, you hang, hang the bike up on the, on the wall, but you're thinking, keep it down on the ground.
Yeah, I, I would stick with the kinda bike rack we got here in the city.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
They'll be hanging a little Jimmy from the hooks there.
Yeah, yeah.
It looks like covered golf cart parking right now.
Could be.
There you go.
Okay, very good, we'll, we'll take that into, into the design process and kinda look at that and make sure that, that view, that we don't, we aren't creating a, a, and, but a, we can keep the bike rack back to the side. I think bringing this, you know, kinda base down on the front is very strong gesture, but we can certainly open up that backside to make it a little bit less of a spot for hoodlums.
Okay.
Another policy question that you might consider. You're opening, you're creating all that space to set and kinda be around, that's, is that eight feet from the door?
Um, are you talking, talking of smoking?
I am, thinking of smoking, yes, cause that's exactly what's gonna happen. We get a lot of people from some of the unity houses and whatnot, they're gonna assume that that's a cove that's created, they're gonna come and smoke in it.
Yeah.
We don't have any smoking ordinances, I don't think, in the city, so they can be eight feet away from the door and smoke. If that's gonna be the policy or the case.
We can, we can.
We can put in a nice smoker's pole.
Or we can put a no smoking.
Or we could make it no smoking, yeah.
On the property?
Yeah.
In general?
Yeah, we could.
They can go out and smoke under the tree.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, to keep them away from that.
Then they'll just use the bathrooms.
We're working on it.
I, I think we can control that piece, Richard. Good point. Any other comments, suggestions, questions? Next step?
Uh, next step, we have a, a task order, so you guys know that we have a master service agreement with you for a lot of these projects, the data center re-roof, some other projects. We have that proposal ready to go, almost ready to go, we just wanted to make sure we had this scope right. So we'll finish that up in the next day or so, and I think it kinda runs through Mario or somebody to get approval on that to keep moving forward. And then we'll work with Maxwell on a, kind of a, a drawing development and also Veritas, uh, drawing development schedule. And see what, what the right dates will be to get it on the street appropriately, and, you know, when people will be interested in it, and all that kinda good stuff.
And could somebody talk about the timeline for these guys for, you know, what that might look like for getting bid documents out?
Yeah, when, when the bid documents are done, we were talking probably two or three months, right?
Yeah, yeah, it'd be November, December timeframe.
Um, it'll take a bit, we'll provide three weeks of bidding, is what we'll do, so we'll try and advance that, we'll pre-qualify any contractors we need to, um, bid in over a three week period. Probably have bids back then by end of the year, that we can award in January.
Okay, I got a question, Mark. Do we have any, do we have money in this year's budget that we were wanting to encumber or not for, for this project? Do you remember?
No.
Not, okay, we're good then.
So we won it next year.
Yeah, we're good then, yeah.
So then we, that's when we would do a GMP amendment, or a, yeah, GMP amendment.
Yeah.
CMC.
Okay.
I think we had designer consultant, like, to finish out this year, though.
Yeah, yeah, I think we've got some of that, but it's not, we don't have anything to.
Correct.
Encumber as far as trying to get it awarded this year or anything, but, yeah. I just wanna make sure before. Okay, um, so I, I think what I probably oughta do is just get a motion from council to move forward. On the LCC facade project. And get us, get us to the point of bid documents. Does that sound reasonable, guys?
Yep.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to, to move forward with the LCC facade project, to get us to bid documents. And hopefully we'll be able to get those out by the end of the year, but, so I need a motion.
Before we make this motion, is that the only, the only thing that you got? I'm really, for what, what is this costing and stuff, I'm really not impressed by looking at it. I mean, it may just be me.
You want Ferris wheel?
Well, I know, but I mean, I'm serious, I mean, just looking, it just looks, to me, it looks plain. Am I, is it just me, or is it, maybe it's just me, but that's just me. Seemed like it could be something more eye catching.
What do you want?
I don't, well, I don't know. I want picture, I want, I see I want picture, I don't want picture, but I don't know. I really don't know what you wanna do.
We can get a eight by ten glossy.
I'm just trying to say.
Think that'll bring it.
For 1.4 million dollars.
Maybe we get those fountain lines to kinda pour it over on it.
Well, I think when.
There you go.
When it was fancier, more eye catching, the budget was 1.8 to 2.2.
Huh?
But when it was more eye catching and attracted, like, more attention grabbing, it, the budget was 1.8 or 2.2.
Really?
So we, we removed those.
Yeah.
Things from the budget to get it down to 1.5.
I mean, it's just me, it just seemed pretty plain, I.
I'm sure through CDs you'll look for opportunities to.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot, there's gonna be a lot of opportunities for some subtle detail, but I'm always a fan of, just my opinion, I completely respect your, your opinion. There's a lot of opportunities for detail, you know, little, little things like that, that I think we've all, all seen some opportunity with that, like, light tower. Whether we, we study a, a color changing thing, and maybe that's gonna bring some vibrancy to the prod, you know, to the, to the look of it.
Lighting in general.
Yeah. Yeah.
But enhancing too, Lenny, I think, uh, you know, to where, like, at night, I mean, it would have a, a really nice appeal.
Yeah, well, it's not used at night that often, I mean, as far as looking at it, it looks, it'll look nice. But I mean, I, I think some of what Lenny may be trying to say, just some, some of the attractional things, but there may be some innovative design that would be a little bit more.
I think adding, adding that, that, what you call it, little retaining wall.
With a couple of trees.
Put a couple of trees in there, I mean, it's gonna, that'll make it.
Aesthetically, I think that'll make a difference.
Aesthetically look a little, little more.
Do you feel like it looks a little sterile, Lenny? Little bit, just industrial, kinda sterile looking, is that what you're kinda saying?
What do you think, Richard?
I like a simplistic design myself, and I think most people like that as well, especially for the city. I think the, um, I think the goal of the city over the years is to almost keep things more of a simplistic nature. I mean, even with the stage, it's not as gaudy as it could have been, it's a very nice, community oriented design. So this being a community center, I think this is exactly what it gives us. I think if we had, like the mayor was stating, with the lighting that could be added to it, that will brighten things up as well, especially at night, which we'll need when we get into winter time. You know, we'll need to have lighting down there, cause the sun will go down sooner. But I think just that one tower there that's gonna be able to be, the light will be changed.
Mhm.
I think that in and of itself, when you're looking down onto it from US 50, I think it'll be eye catching, I think it'll be pleasing.
I think that's just my opinion, you know, it's, I mean, I'm fine, you know.
You're, you're entitled to.
Yeah.
I think if the brown brick was blue, if we painted it blue, hate to paint something like that, but I just, I don't know, the brown just kinda doesn't.
Yeah.
In there, doesn't go together.
Yeah.
Doesn't flow together.
I could.
Might be a lot of blue, though.
Yeah, I, I think you gotta have some contrast to make it pop a little bit. And we're not big fans, I mean, there's, there's painting of brick, but there's also, it could stain it.
Stain it.
Yeah, staining's a little bit more, you know, breathes, breathes a little bit more for the brick. So that is certainly something we could look at, maybe as an alternate, I don't know how that could flow into the budget. I mean, I don't, I don't know that it would be a budget breaker, per se, but certainly it's something we could study, uh, to, to study the color of that, to, to provide the contrast.
Yeah, I, I just don't think it just flows together, that brown and then the blue.
Yeah, yeah.
It's existing, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it is existing, so, I mean, it, but here's our chance to, you know, update it, kinda modernize it if we, if we wanted to. And it's kinda contained in that one spot. I, I do believe, I think we're fairly co, you know, fairly accurate with the color of this block, I think it is a, on.
Just a natural split.
I, I think so. So if there was a way to maybe stain that white, whitewash it a little bit to, to take that brownness out, that might, that might help.
I like the contrast, especially if we have a wood grain.
Yeah.
You know, soft it on, under that.
You're saying, yeah, the other, other way, if you kind of look at it.
Yeah, you see a different color there.
Yeah, that might bring.
If I just imagine the brown brick as blue, and then that would bring out the door part more.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It would focus into your door more.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll, um, as we get going, we're gonna pull some samples of metal, the metal panel and the wood and we could probably find a, you know, and then just kind of have those set up against that existing brick and.
Cut, paste some samples for them to recover.
Yeah, 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 we'll have some samples that we can just kind of take out there on site and look at it.
Suck all the place big blue.
Yeah.
Dana, what would we have with that metal panel on the back of the dugout?
If you get a picture of blue.
At what point would you pull that? I'm just thinking from an aesthetic standpoint.
In this, in this budget review.
In this budget review.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I do have one question. Um, I know when we signed up with Veritas a while back, we ended up getting Veritas. We got a project manager, which was Maxwell, um, but my question is, when we bid this out, you know, my thought and understanding was that we were gonna incorporate these with like other projects to be able to save us money. And it seems like all these projects are kind of going individually. Is that true or false or?
Well, let me, let me add to that, because I.
You know what I'm saying, I'm just trying to get.
No, 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 and.
For the financial part.
But their services is what, is what is being combined on these jobs. The services, the engineering services is what's getting combined on these jobs, um, such as, okay, the, the trail up at, uh, or not the trail, but the, uh, the trail bridge, um, and, and then you've got, well, the LPD is in, in the middle of this. And I purposely told them that the LPD needs to be a, a separate project, because it's, it's a high dollar project. And they're working in, they're working in the background on the LPD project at the same time that they're working on the LCC project. So the services that you're getting from this group is all where we're sa, we're saving the money. If, I, I think, did you think we were gonna save it in the bidding part or?
I, well, I, I didn't get it from the get-go. I didn't really understand the whole thing from, from the start. But I, I was just wondering, I, I didn't know if, like, when we, it just seems like we're all bidding them individually. I didn't know if that, we were gonna have different people that bid out and did part of this project, did part of the, you know, with the electric department, with police, dah dah dah, it just seems like they're all going individual.
Well, all the projects are coming together sort of right now.
Okay.
I mean, you got, you got the data center roof, uh, you've got the electric building, uh, that Billy has just, I think, approved.
Correct.
Is that correct? They're all in the, sort of the same, uh, we call it, uh, what am I saying here? Engineering.
Yeah, it's kind of phase.
Phase, I guess.
On the same basket.
They're all in the same phase.
Well, I'm, I'm sort of with Mark. I mean, here's, I'm just a simple guy. I don't understand why we need two engineering firms. We got Veritas, we got American Structure Point, we had American Structure Point before.
So Veritas is the.
So why do we need two of them doing? Veritas isn't engineering.
Owner's rep, yeah. So we're helping manage the engineer and the CM for every this process.
If you remember the way it was.
I remember that.
They, we, it would, they, they were sort of the construct, the, the CM, the, uh, we call it.
Owner's rep.
Owner's rep.
And then they brought in Structure Point to be the engineering firm. That's where that came from.
Well, I mean, I, I, our contract's actually with you guys, it's not with Veritas, I mean, separate, but, but they're different tasks, right? I mean, Veritas is certainly kind of your voice to us and, you know, sort of an intermediary and helps you guys walk through the process that you don't do every day, uh, in, in my opinion, anyway. And then, uh, Structure Point, we've got generally all the services that we're, we're offering. Uh, certainly, we're, we're running the vertical projects, call it the vertical projects, separate than the horizontal stuff, that, because we've got separate teams that know a lot more about all that stuff, so we're trying to keep that efficient, um, uh, from the trailheads and, and trail projects and bridge projects to the building projects, trying to keep those efficient. And then certainly Maxwell's on that, on the, the CM side, uh, managing the bidding and, um, construction management side of it, so.
And the original plan from the beginning was to have LCC and the PD kind of have that same timeline, so we're not breaking up in the same haste. The PD's on hold until we can understanding from council on how we're moving forward. And I know we've decided to do a schematic only to keep the ball rolling with both of these projects, because there is efficiencies in doing that from a financial standpoint, these projects, moving at the same time. That's one way that you're saving money in that process.
I think the schedules will overlap.
Yes.
This project and PD, so it should save some of the cost.
That's, I was just curious, you know, I, I know that we talked earlier that some of these things were gonna get combined, and that was my question.
They don't have to go at the same time to still get some of those. So you'll see.
Okay.
Question? Lenny, you started.
Yeah, this, this meeting would have been over for.
Here I am. Where's, where's Tony at, or Tommy? We can always blame him.
Oh.
Sure.
Sure, he's watching.
Yeah.
Yeah. Couldn't get it to go.
What other questions, what other questions we have? Moving forward. Okay, entertain a motion to move forward with the LCC facade project, uh, to get us to bid documents.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Anything else, guys, today that you want to bring up?
Lenny, do you want to copy or render any pictures of that, so maybe you can see some subtle tweaks and tunes that we can convey?
Yes, please.
Yeah, sure.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll email you all those images.
We got time to do the detail work.
Yeah, yeah, and I guess, um, just so, just so I'm aware, you know, don't, going through the design process, um, you know, we'll, we'll maybe come back, we'll, we'll dig in, get the details go, started, and come back and call it fifty percent and maybe just kind of give you an update of where things are and how those, some of those details are shaking out. Does that make sense?
And Kendall, I don't, I don't wanna speak for you in the process, but as we go through designing, you're also gonna be given cost estimates as we get to a thirty percent, sixty, ninety, whatever that may look like, so we're keeping track of budget as we go, so we're not overdesigning.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be, oh.
I'm not saying that.
Formal estimates at every step, because we're trying to, we're trying to watch CM costs also, but we'll be providing input.
Yeah.
And guidance.
I mean, that, that's, that's how we've kind of arrived where we're at, you know, Maxwell and us, we've been soundboarding back and forth, just say, okay, we're, we're, because it is a rough order of magnitude, you know, this isn't, this is a kind of a specialty project, it's not a, a building, building, so it's got some pieces and parts instead of some spaces, so it, it's been a, a challenge, but a good challenge to try to figure out how to make sure we're, we're thinking of it the right way, and Maxwell's expertise on knowing the climate, bid climate and material costs and things like that, it's been helpful, so.
You know, that this is going later on in the year too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm not saying the concept's not, not correct, I'm just saying.
Doesn't hurt my feelings.
It's a community center, and there's a lot of people sees the community center, a lot of people's down there, and it just, I don't know how to explain, maybe something be a little eye-catching.
Yeah.
Right there, you know, that's all, that's all I'm saying, just, instead of just looking plain like it does. But I don't know, I was reading, I'm not an architect.
You just want that damn Ferris wheel.
I like his.
I'm working.
I like his persistence.
That's what he's getting to.
Alright.
I've got a lot of people on board, you know that, Mayor.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
I entertain, I entertain a motion to do it, Jennifer.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
There's coffee and donuts over there, so.
Donuts and rice, huh?